Around the corner here, you will see the actual open meeting act. If you would, would you all please stand with us, join us for a moment of silence and as well, the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll continue with roll call. Granquist?
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
Claussen?
Here.
Murin?
Here.
Moaning?
Here.
Faust?
Here.
Vile?
Here.
All right. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
We have a motion with a couple of seconds here to approve the consent agenda. If you will, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right, and as well, approval of the full agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
Motion with a second to approve the full agenda again. If you will, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Okay. We are going to start off with a public hearing tonight. I'm going to open item 2022 and consider as well the resolution that talks about the preliminary plan. So I'm opening public hearing amending the present comp plan at 3205-3301 Kenningstine Avenue from commercial to high-density residential at the request of Maestrick Properties, LLC, and as well, the public hearing at the request of Maestrick Properties for zoning change from C3 service commercial district to R3 multiple-family residential district at 3205-3301 Kenningstine Avenue. And again, I'm certain that the preliminary plan that's being suggested as well will enter into the discussion. So with that, do I have some... Shane, are you starting this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Absolutely. Thanks, Mayor and Council. Mr. Maestrick's rezoned to... From C3 to R3 started in April in front of the Planning Commission when he went before the Planning Commission and requested the zone change. That zone change failed, as I think the Mayor and Council probably know, that's in your packets as well. The main concerns that were heard at that meeting were apartment complexes and buffer yard. Those two concerns were heard from the property owners in the area, the buffer yard requirements that were in the code at the time, and the impact they would have on the commercial area, commercial areas surrounding this particular piece of property, and the fact that if you change it to R3, then outright, there can be apartment complexes can be built there and high-density residential can be built there in that area. And that was another concern, obviously, for the residents and the property owners in the area. So the Planning Commission turned that down at the time. So your staff and the property owners and the applicant went to work to try to facilitate some common ground and look for areas of common concern there so we could try to get a win-win situation out there. Opportunities develop, the community don't come around very often, you know, and obviously we're in a pinch in our housing market right now in the community that needs to be addressed, and we actually have a task force assigned to that. So your staff went to work to try to facilitate some of those discussions. We had a neighborhood meeting. I personally met with several of the residents on multiple occasions, not residents, property owners on multiple occasions throughout this process since April and looking for common ground. One thing that happened in that discussion was we were able to look at the code really clearly and address the buffer yard requirement. And you've made a code change, we recommend, staff brought you a code change, and you as a council have made that code change, which takes care of the buffer yard requirement as it is imposed onto the commercial property. It really puts that requirement in an instance where residential's coming in on commercial, which is rare. It's usually the other way around, where commercial's coming in on residential. In this circumstance, residential's wanting to go into the commercial area a bit more. That buffer yard requirement that was in the code has been changed and now is going to be accommodated or is required to be accommodated on the residential side of the ledger. So that zone, or that code change was in front of you and has been approved through the Planning Commission and through the Mayor and Council. The second one was apartment complexes being built there. When we started talking about that with the applicant, that never was the applicant's desire to build apartments there. He always wanted to do an R2-style, single-family attached duplexes style housing out there, much like, much similar to what's across the street in this area. That was always his plan. So when we suggested that we try to protect the area, that particular area, from apartment complexes, the applicant embraced that wholeheartedly, and they worked on a planned unit development. What a plan you... In a nutshell, what a planned unit development does is an overlay that controls a particular piece of property. You put those controls on in front, so the Planning Commission, Mayor and Council, the community, the applicant, everyone knows what it's going to look like, basically, before it's built, and the controls can't be changed unless they come back in front of the Planning Commission and the Mayor and Council. So that seemed to be an area where there was some common ground there in between the applicant and the property owners. That request was brought forward, C3 to R3 with a planned unit development, brought forward to the Planning Commission again in May. The Planning Commission took testimony on that and heard that and acted on a four-to-four vote, a tie vote on that particular action. And then further in that meeting, they approved the preliminary unit, or the planned unit development, seven to zero, moving forward with the concept that a planned unit development may be, again, a common win-win situation for the area out there. Those actions were, again, trying to get us to a point where we can make some needed development in our community happen. I know this area's been, has an interesting history. If you care to see the history, we do have some slides available that we put together that shows the history, the transition of that area from agriculture all the way through what it is today in 2014, and it goes back about 20 years or so, so you can really see that and how it's developed. It's kind of interesting, really, to me, when we looked at that hard and heavy and understood how residential and commercial really grew together in that general area out west. It gets us to a point here tonight that you have an action in front of you and some testimony in front of you that allows the Mayor and Council to look in their crystal ball and see what is best for the community growth as we move forward, you know? It's a hard decision that... It always is a hard decision. Planning isn't a perfect science by any means, it's more of an art, and the Mayor and Council always have that crystal ball, we hope, anyway, to make the best decision for the community. So with that being said, I'd sure be happy, or staff would be happy to answer any questions that the Mayor and Council have or show you some history if you prefer or like to, and we'll go on. But that's kind of in a nutshell where we've been with this particular process, and that's that. So any questions you might have? I'd be happy to answer, try to answer.
Shane, I am going to correct a comment you made. The vote of the Planning Commission was seven-one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yep, seven-one.
Okay.
Sorry, I looked at my two as a zero there.
Yeah, I've seen your writing before, I understand, so...
[laughing]
Okay. Does any of the council have questions for City Administrator before we move on? This is certainly a public hearing, but any questions on what he's delivered thus far?
I think we need to see the overlay. I think we do need to see the overlay of what, how this has progressed and the zoning changes.
You'd like to see some of that history?
Yes, please.
You'd like to see it now, or would you like to hear from the applicant?
Whatever. We can do it now, or we can do it...
What do you feel? You know, I'm...
We can show it right now. I mean, the history is just, it's, you know, just like anything in community, as we develop as a community, you have changes that happen to your community, and they're embraced, and comprehensive plans are changed or modified, and zoning is changed and modified to accommodate growth in the community. And that's really what occurred out here and occurs everywhere in the community, really, as you grow. So Dennis has some of that history, just to show you what the area has been and what it currently looks like now.
I'll start with the zoning aspects that have occurred out there, basically from 31st Street to 37th Street. You can kind of see where my cursor's moving across there. That's the general area where the property that we're having the public hearing on tonight is located. But prior to 1994, this entire area was zoned R1. In 1994, the western portion was zoned C3, that you can see is in the hatch, or the crosshatched area there in blue. That was followed by 1996, there was a piece that was zoned R3, there's assisted living unit on that area that was changed from commercial back to residential. The next group has some townhouses and condominiums on them. That was a 1997 action. 2000, some additional townhouses and apartments were built. 2001, there was another piece that was zoned R3. 2004, we now have some of the R1 on the eastern side of the property being zoned to commercial. Later in 2004, there was property that was changed from R1 to commercial, and also some R3. 2006, had some commercial going back to R3. 2007, there was another piece that was commercial that went back to R3. And again, the area that's being discussed tonight is right in here, where I'm moving my cursor around. That was from a zoning aspect. Got some aerial photos here that kind of show how the development occurred, primarily over the east half, more so than the west half. 2003, we've got doctors, or the eye clinics down here in the southwest corner, the surgery This is the farm credit building. You can see most of that area that got rezoned residential has all been built up with the residence, or the residential uses there. This is the Norman Roche property where the homestead was. There was nothing that started in 2003. 2005, we pick up a couple more commercial buildings over here on the western part of the project, and you can see that the Roche property is under construction, a lot of dirt work going on at that point in time. The first commercial building that was built out there, it appears that the foundation is under construction, right about in the middle of the picture. 2007, the R3 that was zoned is done. First one over there on the eastern side where they brought the R3 back in the commercial industrial buildings there, and then the large furniture store and flooring building is complete. In 2010, a couple more residential units were completed. I think this is Sphere Physical Therapy, doctor's office there, and then the Viero office building. So that's kind of the history of the zoning and the building from 2003 to 2010.
Okay, Council, does that help? Hopefully.
Who put the slide together? Who did all this work, put all together for us?
Engineering staff.
Okay.
Myself did a lot of the research on the zoning, and then the engineering folks, the guys that make the CAD system work, did the drawing for me.
Any other questions or comments? All right, then, this is a public hearing. Let's have those wanting to speak in favor come forward for us first, please. State your name for us and sign in. Going a little crazy on me.
[laughing] Always happens when Dick stands up.
Do I look that bad? They have to turn the lights off? Okay, I'm Dick Johnson, representing Maestrick Properties, LLC, who are the owners of the subject property. As Mr. Smith pointed out, the property that we're trying to get changed to, from C3 to R3, and ultimately put the planned development overlay on are the three lots immediately behind the Flooring Solutions Store out on the west end of town. If this thing is approved, the owners would like to build 19 living units on the property, consisting of one four-unit townhouse, three three-unit townhouses, and two two-family As you probably heard, we haven't had a whole lot of luck for the Planning Commission. Prior to our adventures in April and May, in late 2012 or early 2013, we tried to put many storage back there, and it never went to a vote, but there was a lot of opposition to that, not only from the public, but from the Planning Commission, it seemed like, and we ended up withdrawing the request. We feel the Planning Commission's action on April 8th, I'm sorry, on May 20th, basically was telling you guys that we don't know for sure what we, what it should be zoned, that's up to you to decide, but if you go with the R3, we think you should use the planned development. And as Shane said, that is basically put in place to give some assurance to the neighbors that what we say we're going to do is what will happen. Like Shane said, if we want to make any significant changes, we have to come back and go through this whole process again and try to get you guys to go along with it. We've met with, well, I wasn't able to be there, but Mr. Maestrick met with the neighbors and staff and stuff, as Shane alluded to. I talked to several of the commercial owners last week, had good conversations with them all. We couldn't really get to anything where they weren't going to be here tonight, as evidenced by the people in the back. And I'm sure they're going to tell you what they think about it. Just a couple of quick comments, and I'll sit down. The future land use map of the comprehensive plan shows this area to be residential, either medium density or high density. The first ordinance you have before you, in effect, we're undoing what we did in one of the years when we changed the zoning to our C3, excuse me, or undoing part of it for the comprehensive plan. The other thing I would point out, or a couple of things, the, there is some risk by Mr. Maestrick here, too. The C3 zoning does have some allow, or permitted uses in it that aren't terribly compatible with residential. I mean, they can be done, but, you know, it's typically things you wouldn't think of. Automobile repair is one thing that comes to mind, engineering offices are another. But anyway, you know, so I think it's in his interest to have an investment out there that he's got to protect also, which I think will help the whole neighborhood. The other thing that I found interesting in looking through the code today, I think, based on uses, just on use now, I think that both RJ Gaul's property and Jed Christensen's property would be allowed in OD District, which is office district. Another thing that's allowed in office district is multiple-family housing. So the code kind of realizes that maybe these two uses aren't totally incompatible. And with that, I will try to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Dick?
And by the way, I want to reserve the right to come back and make more statements if I feel the need. Any questions?
Dick, you were present during the presentation from staff as far as the history. Was your firm involved in any of that process that way?
Yeah, we basically did all the work for Chris on this 40 acres, the plating and the zoning changes and a lot of the site plans.
And I guess the reason that I asked, you know, I've noticed that it's flip-flopped back and forth from, you know, start out residential, flip to denser residential, flip to commercial. Reasoning behind that, or, again, it was kind of a rather interesting history of 16 to 20 years now, so...
As best as I can remember, the C3 made sense along the highway frontage, which, you know, it's basically, it's, C3 is intended for use along an arterial street. And we, I think it always pretty well planned that the northwest quarter of the property would be residential. We took the C3 farther up, probably because we wanted to put Gulf USA back there, and that probably needed to be in C3 zoning. I think as time went on, it seemed to make more and more sense for the northerly part of it to be residential, and so that's where several of the zoning change requests came from.
Okay, thank you. Sure.
Dick, it looks like you succeeded, too, that along the highway that is commercial, and it looks like the road back there kind of divides it, and the rest is north of there is residential. So it looks like there's a natural break right there.
You're talking about Kenningstine Avenue?
Yeah, I think it's Kenningstine, where you go along...
The northeast-west street?
Yep.
Okay.
And it keeps, you've got commercial all the way along there, and then that road above there, you have residential.
Right.
Okay.
Is that a question, or?
This is just a question.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions, or observations for Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, who owns the property in the northeast corner there?
Northeast? You mean where the tower is?
Yeah.
Viero Wireless.
They own all of that?
No, they just own a lot where the tower sits. Maestrick Properties owns the, well, there, there's a couple of doctors that own the two lots front on Kenningstine Avenue, and then Maestrick Properties owns the rest. Can I show you this?
Sure.
These two lots, owned by doctors, and these four.
So these here and those two, so five lots?
Yeah.
It looks like you have a little more room up there. Would there be any way to put your housing up in that section?
Well, I don't know that we have any more room than where we're proposing, based on the ownership. The two issues that I've, I've been asked this question before, and the two things that come to mind are, I believe there's a good-sized electrical line running north and south through the middle of that block, probably among other things, near the tower. And if that wasn't bad enough, I'm sure there's a big water line running east and west of that little block. So could we develop some up there? Sure we could, but we can't put any buildings on top of the water line or the electrical line, so we're going to be limited somewhat in what we can do.
Also, on that question, Councilman, you know, as part of the facilitation through this, I was suggested by some of the property owners in the area there, Mr. Christen talked to me about that personally, and the potentials for that residential development up there, and...
Grab the mic, Shane, will you?
In particular, whether those lots could be swapped. I mean, the question was, is maybe a guy could, to rezone that whole chunk there, that old northern chunk where the tower is. Mr. Maestrick only owns part of it, and there's another owner to the south, as Dick described. I ran that by the property owners. Mr. Maestrick was willing to definitely look at that and offered that up as a possibility to the property owners to the south, but they weren't interested in that. We had some face-to-face discussions about that, Courtney and I did, and they weren't necessarily interested in making that swap, so that didn't come together as I'd hoped.
The other thing I will tell you, if I could, you need to realize that where we're proposing putting this planned development, Mr. Gaul's property and Mr. Christensen's property will still be across the street from vacant lots. It won't be in front of their property at all. And when I talked to the landowners, one of the concerns that was expressed was, well, if we allow it here, it's just going to keep going. And residential, and, you know, that's a valid concern. If we could, if we could think of a way to guarantee that that wouldn't happen, I think we'd probably give it to you. Mr. Maestrick doesn't think it should go any further. He and I were just talking about that up in the parking lot. But there's, you know, there's nothing, the only safeguard they have, if you will, is you eight folks sitting right here.
Well, and, Mr. Johnson, I, you know, if I can remind you, there's been a lot of changes over the years, and so...
Yeah, I know.
Be careful.
Yeah, no, I'm not going to promise anything.
Okay, very good.
[inaudible]
But, you know, point well made. Anything else for...
Can we see a map of how things are currently zoned out there? Basically, that aerial photo with the zoning included?
This one? This is current zoning.
I think that wrote, that line right in the paint, because that wrote...
Do you have the 2010 map, Dennis?
Aerial or zoning map?
No, okay.
Well, I'm asking, do you want the aerial or the zoning map?
The zoning map. Was it an aerial map for 2010?
It was an aerial map that I had of 2010. This is the most current zoning map of the property that Carhart developed and MBH developed. It goes right down the middle is where the divide line was. This area in here, just above where we detail it, is R1 as well, around there, but...
Dennis, do you have a map that's a little more expansive than that, that shows...
Sir, let me go out and get the city zoning map. Okay, you want me to zoom in tighter, or?
Please.
The property that we're talking about is right here where you got the cursor going. This is the furniture building.
Can I ask if, does Maestrick Properties own the R3 area north of the current residential? Yeah, right there.
No, that property was owned by Stuart Hanson, and I think it's still in a Hanson Trust or something of that nature, to the best of my knowledge. But that row of trees, this is a row of trees through here, that's a property line. So Maestrick's property basically ends just north of the existing residential apartment building, or townhouses, I would be a better description.
Claire? Okay. Claire? Okay, we'll ask you to take your seat, Mr. Johnson. Yep, done with you. Anyone else that wants to come forward and speak in favor of?
Good evening. I am Chris Maestrick of Maestrick Properties. I think we've, we've done a great job of developing some ground that needed developing in Norfolk. The land in question right now is zoned C three. Many, many years ago, the, the staff of, of the City of Norfolk said, zone at C three, we can always come down to R three. Let's go with the flow. Start at C three, we'll, we'll see where it goes. I would love to develop that all as C three if somebody has an option for that. In ten years, when nobody comes forward to buy the property, you have to look at other uses. We, we've got the residential across the street to the north. I think, you know, as you looked at your map, more residential right here, almost flows just as well as commercial right there. It's, it's a long ways from RJ Gall's building. It's even further from Jed Christensen's building. Jed does have nine units right behind him. That's pretty close. But, but, but I think, I'm not here to, to make this bad for the City of Norfolk. I'm here to, to enhance the City of Norfolk. I'm here to make nineteen more families call Norfolk home. How much better can it be than that? So, so we are, we are proposing, the, the units that we would propose would look, you know, I think you guys all have been back there. They're going to look similar to the ones just behind it. They're good-looking units. I wouldn't want to embarrass the city or embarrass myself. We still have property to the east and we still have property to the north. I still think it's the right thing to do for, for the City of Norfolk. And I'm just asking for your approval of that. I didn't ask for any money from the City of Norfolk. This is all I'm bringing in outside money to invest in the City of Norfolk. You should be proud of that. What kind of taxes we're going to bring? How many more people we're going to bring? I think that's good for the city. What questions would you have of Maestrick Properties? I'm half of Maestrick Properties. My brother Ron owns the other half. So we're not a big city firm. We're just O'Neill, Nebraska people and Howells, Nebraska people meeting in Norfolk, trying to make it a better place.
The neighbors that you have on the sides of you that own that property, I had a couple of them tell me that when you sold them the land, you said it was zoned commercial and that you were intending to put commercial on there. And they're a little upset that, that now you're changing after you sold them the land. I, I know things change, but you got to hear them too. How do you feel about that?
I, I would have known for the last ten years that if things don't work in C three, which lots we would like to develop to R three, Dave? And that would have been the three we're talking about now. Can I remember what exactly was said? No. Do I think I said that? No, I don't. But, things change. I would like to develop at a C three, build offices. They're overbuilt in Norfolk. Build one and see how easy they are to rent. So you got to go, go with what works. The, the city came, came to us and said, the hospital needs housing, Nucor needs housing. Chris, let's meet with those people. Shane organized a meeting. I've spent days upon days upon days upon days upon days, meeting with people like that. A number of years ago, I wanted to put, put, uh, storage units there. The Planning Commission said, don't put storage units there, put housing there, put storage units here. Well, guess what? They turned my storage units down in the top corner too. So tell me what I should do. If you think commercial's the right way to go, let's build commercial, but it's hard to rent. So I think if I didn't, guys, Mayor. What, what other questions, Dave?
That's all I have right now. I'll probably have some more.
Well, that's fine, you know, I, we, we do, we do a lot of business. My main business is drain bins and elevator legs. I've got hundreds of customers in this area. Just, just talk to all of them. You know, looked at the work we've done there. It was a bad-looking piece of property. Looks pretty nice now. We said we're going to build nice housing, we did. Said we're going to build nice housing here, we will.
Chris, why, why that lot or those three lots? Why not say where that cursor is right behind these other ones? Run a street in there and add more housing in there? Is that possible?
Which ones?
That's a.
Just to the south of those trees?
Those are, those are drainage detention facilities.
Okay, okay.
That's, that's unvulnerable area was.
Hey, first time I saw them out.
That's fine. That's why the, looks like a vacant area, but it has a public works purpose.
Okay.
We were asked to put those in to, we were kind of the last ones in the area. Now we need water retainage. So we had to put water retainage.
Mr. Maestrick, did you say that you had at one time thought of putting storage units up in that northeast lot? That where the cursor is? Okay. I guess one of the questions I've had during this whole thing is kind of to Cory's question. Why the insistence on these lots that you're proposing right now? Did you, have you done a feasibility study of developing that particular land where, you know, as it was clear in the Planning Commission meetings, your, your neighbors and other commercial developers there stated they had no opposition to development in that area?
We, we did look at it, you know, Dick brought up, there's, there's power lines crisscrossing there, there's water lines. There's a harder time getting the kind of units we'd like to put in there on the, on the, on the square footage we have available. There's slope issues there. The lots that we're proposing, it fits better. I think it looks better. Across the street is, is residential. I think it works, I think it works better there, Josh. Sure, we looked at that. Dick's looked at a hundred different ways for us. We feel it's still the right place to go.
Also, Councilman, when I brought that forward to the property owners to the south at front on Kenningstine there, they said they'd be neutral at best if he moved forward with residential development behind them because they wanted to keep the lots and they said they'd be neutral at best. I had a couple of conversations with them. I inferred from those comments that they'd probably be opposed to any residential development on those lots. I can't say that for sure. They'd have to speak to themselves if, if that moved forward at some point in the future. But as far as everyone's saying that that absolutely will be residential, would be great there, that's not the case. The property owners, the, the doctors in question there, their comments to me would they'd be neutral, Shane, at best. So I just want to make sure that the council understood that.
Shane, do they want commercial there or what do they?
They own, they own the two lots there and they don't, they don't necessarily want residential back there. It's zone C three now, so I would assume they would be okay with C three. They don't really have a choice because it's C three. That's, you know, that's, that is kind of a point with C three out there. I mean, it is C three, so if the billing permit comes in for a whole variety of, of list of of development opportunities in C three, Scott and his staff at Fire Division can't turn that down. I mean, that's one thing that we talked about through the facilitation process with the property owners and with Chris and what that means to them and, you know, I don't know how much risk that is if, and if, I don't know, if you have the list in front of you, Scott, that of the type of businesses that can go in under C three. But there's a wide variety of them. Some that, you know, you could infer or you could demonstrate that might be very intrusive to the neighborhood as well. So I, you know, those kind of questions are, are what the doctors really probably were focusing on in my mind.
C three is stronger than C one, is that true?
Yes, Mayor. C one's light, light commercial, C three's more intensive.
What those doctors told you is kind of the common theme, you know, throughout the whole development. Everybody's kind of sitting here who own the commercial property, like Mr. Maestrick himself and, and the rest of these gentlemen and ladies sitting out here tonight. That's their concern is the commercial investment they made. Obviously, like yourself, you have an investment there. What happens to their property, you know? And so that's where the, this is where the, that's where the planning zoning's coming from. That's where this whole thing is.
Yeah, I think that's accurate.
It's the, you know, the two doctors that own lots. We don't want R three buys.
Does it?
You know, because they, they invested in commercial property. They paid commercial prices for those properties. That's where you get this discussion right now, so.
Absolutely, I think that's absolutely right. You get the discussion and, you know, there's a lot of, you know, what does it mean to my property values? You know, things, it's hard to put your, your fingers on. Only thing you really can, you can do when it comes to those kind of questions is look to the past history and what developments have happened in our community and how commercial and residential has lived in harmony. I can show you many examples in our community where we've had commercial development change from an R residential zoning that bled into the residential neighborhoods. We haven't had very many that we've had, we've had a residential flavor that, or excuse me, a commercial flavor that the residential has pushed into. But you got to remember, commercial and residential, residential's less intense than commercial in the zoning world. So usually, you know, when, when Chris said city staff recommended to go C three because you can maybe always go down to R three, generally, that's a fairly good comment. I mean, generally, that's the way it is because it's less intensive, you know? But as things change over the course of time, you know, that's again, back to you guys, it's crystal ball and how the community developments develops and what you see in those areas, you know, moving forward really is, is, is tough talk. But I can tell you there's successful opportunities that are being developed yet right today in our town that R three and R two and commercial, C one, like commercial are living in harmony and residential are developing right in their rear yards today, for what it's worth.
Dennis, can you show me where that water line goes through that lot in the northeast corner? Or is there one?
The answer tonight is no. I can look it up, but I don't have.
Is there one or is along the, along the tree line or is along the street line or is there even one there?
If I went back to my office and looked at a paper copy, I could probably have an answer, but I don't know off the top of my head and I don't have electronic access to it.
Would the answer be the same on the electrical line?
I won't have the electrical line information. That's NPBD, NPBD keeps those maps and knows where all the lines are. City probably owns it. They're the keeper of the records and the maintenance and.
I know Shane, you said as city administrator, you had different meetings with the commercial property owners in the area. I guess I have a question for Mr. Maestrick. Have, during this process, have you sat down with Mr. Christensen or Mr. Gall or their properties owner, property owners in the area to talk about your plans, your projections for these lots?
There was a first meeting, Shane, when was it? Middle of May. I was at that meeting in this chambers. I was here, RJ Gall was here.
That was the Planning Commission meeting, right?
No.
That was a neighborhood meeting that we had. We organized after the first Planning Commission action. We organized a subcommittee meeting and invited the neighborhood as well. And I, we had great representation from the neighborhood and great discussion there. And I think the, you know, the same kind of points were brought out about property values, about buffer yard, about apartments and those kind of things. And that really was the platform that we went to work and tried to take care of as many of the concerns as we possibly could through our normal processes. And we were able to get to the PUD that protected from the apartments and were able to get to the buffer yard, change in the code that protected from the commercial folks like, like Sugarplum Oak and Flooring Solutions out there would had a concern about that buffer yard encroaching in them and KCM as well had a, had a legitimate concern about that. So we were able to take care of that. I'm also, Chris mentioned the fact that there has been many meetings. I just wanted to confirm that for the Mayor and Council that early in my tenure as city administrator, intern housing was the talk of the town and it remains the talk of the town in, in some circles about what are we going to do with the interns, you know, whether it be the hospital interns, Nucor Steel, industrial interns, engineers and physicians and whatnot coming to town. And Courtney can confirm this all as well because she's been involved in many of those conversations as well. We had many discussions with Nucor Steel and the hospital about these particular pieces of property. So I, that is, that did occur. You know, they were very supportive of that because they still have that need and would see intern housing in general as being a need for the community in this area or others.
Can I ask that lot to the west, north of Kenningstine, that's for sale, correct?
Which one?
North of Kenningstine, west of your residential, is it south and west?
This little guy here?
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, that's, I believe that's a different property. I think that's. Mr. Dreason perhaps owns that piece of property? I, I think, don't hold me to that. But I don't know if it's for sale.
I think there's a for sale sign there. Is that right? Yep.
Josh, you asked if I've met, met with a lot of those people. Besides that, RJ Gall and I have communicated by phone a number of times. He knows where I sit, I know where he sits. If you will, growing up, we were next door neighbors, so we know each other very well. He knows where I'm coming from, I know where he's coming from, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else here that wants to speak in favor of? I will ask that you come forward, state your name for us and sign in. Seeing none, then I will ask those in opposition too to come forward, please. State your name and sign in.
My name is Todd Posposchel and we are the owners of the Ring Solutions building that is in conjunction with Sugarplum Oak and Tammy's Design are the other two businesses that are leasing from us right now. Where the cursor is, the large building there. First of all, I want, I want to thank, Chris has, has done a lot of work in, in trying to accommodate some of the concerns that we had originally. The change in the buffering wording, I think, had to been done or should have been done before this ever came up. It was kind of ludicrous on how it was worded before on who would have to pay for that. So I applaud that you guys changed that in the first place. The, the overlay plan too, I think, was, was a great gesture in attempting to, to maybe quell some of the problems that we had with the possibility of two or three-story apartment buildings and that too. The bigger concern for me, for being a retail owner and a, and a person that bought that property in 2005, was that it was zone C three then. We were actually told that the property in front of us, that other drainage ditch, would be forever put into that, so no development could be done in front of us. So we would always have frontage. The idea that we would buy that property and develop it into commercial retail property, I believe was really the foresight of the, the zoning at that time. And that whole frontage along Roche Avenue was going to be retail. And as you can see, spirit, physical therapy moved in, Viero moved in. We had Dr., sorry, move in behind.
Davis?
Yes, Davis, sorry. All being retail or, or not, not residential properties. My biggest concern is if this does get changed over, it, it could lead to other changes going down. The property next door to us is owned by Mr. Clausen. Mr. Clausen does a lot of residential building. If, if it did turn up that way, Mr. Clausen could decide to develop that as R three. And then I would be completely landlocked by, on, well, two sides, by residential property. And for a retail person, I don't think that's the best move for, for, definitely for us. To me, it looks definitely, there's a very, very good buffer line with Kenningstine Avenue, north of there being residential, south of there being commercial. That looks pretty evident to me from the map. That also doesn't necessarily help Mr. Gall with his property there. But I, I really believe anything south of Kenningstine should stay commercial, should stay C three and, and be left alone as it was. The other thing that kind of stood out to me is, and I appreciate Mr. Maestrick buying the property and everybody takes risks when they buy property, I did. And we put up a $2 million building thinking we're going to be retail and we're going to have retail around us. But there's one, two, three, four, five R three properties within a minute and a half of a hospital that could be developed into, right now, developed into, to, you know, apartments or into condos and that kind of thing. So if there is a definite need for that in the town, which I understand, you know, Shane and the, the Planning Division have looked at that kind of thing, demand will take care of it. People will develop those properties and.
Where did you suggest, Todd, I'm sorry?
What's that?
Where did you suggest?
All of the other.
All of the other R3s right there that are on the map could all be developed right now into the multifamily dwellings, as I understand it. Am I correct? So you have the two just north of the hospital. You still have some north, uh, further north of Kenningstine than us. You have the ones further to the west that are both zoned R3. So any of those could be developed. And if needed, close to the hospital, um, some developer could certainly come in and build those type of, uh, properties and be well within, you know, quick range of the hospital if need be. So, and, and there's many other places in town. Uh, North 30th Street has several property, uh, areas that are open and that's all zoned for that exact, there's already duplexes going in there. So I believe there's plenty of other places in town that could possibly develop that way. I don't want to be surrounded completely by residential. We bought the property thinking it was going to be commercial. It was zone C3. Pretty well promised that we would, uh, forever have frontage because the property between us and the highway would never, ever be developed. And, um, that's, that's the way, that's one of the reasons we took the risk and bought the property at that time.
But that is a true statement. Is, am I not?
Here is drainage area.
Yep.
So he will always have frontage?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's required drainage.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
So yes, that will always be frontage. Anything else, Todd? I'm not, any questions for Todd?
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else that wants to come forward and speak in opposition to?
Randy Clausen, uh, with KCM. We have the property between Todd's and Spear Physical Therapy. And I'm worried too about the fact that if this goes on this time, because we've been here so many different times when this is getting flipped around and flopped. I'm worried about that too, becoming behind us too and then to be a friend of RJ and Jed. I just, I'm worried about that type of zoning that you could just leapfrog and keep going. And I know that Shane, you brought the fact that one time down at Taylor Street by 18th and, 18th Prospect, Taylor with the, uh, Futures Building and Scott Williams down in that area. And then, uh, where the Meadows is at. We did meet with the Meadows first. We met with Kraft Incorporated. We all worked together on that at the time to get it in that. We didn't do any leapfrogging. We just, we, we looked at the overall scheme and we got the blessing with all three up, with, with Paul McIntosh, with Kraft, My Singer and KCM.
Yeah, absolutely, I understand, Randy. I appreciate you pointing that out. I guess I was only trying to indicate to the mayor and council that that is a prime example of R3 and R2 and, and commercial, see light commercial living in peace and harmony. A very nice commercial properties down there at 18th and Pazwalk that live in peace and harmony. I was only trying to point that out, that there's other examples of that in the community. But as far as working together and getting that, that is always where the, where the honey is, working together and getting those things solved.
We did work that. That's why I didn't want to bring that up, that we did work together with those three entities to make that work. But I, like I said, my concern is the fact of what we paid. Paid premium price for the property. And this will not enhance our property by going R3 there.
Thanks, Randy.
Randy, go. Randy?
Randy.
Short question. Didn't mean to make you run off that way. Uh, just, uh, your, KCM's intent always is for this to be C then, that way? Because Todd hinted at that you might build apartments there or housing there, so. I, you know, I, I was just going, you know.
When you bought that, Randy, did they tell you that they were going to leave theirs commercial? Or did you have a conversation? Todd mentioned that he did.
We remember, we were there understanding to stay out there and be commercial.
And do you remember who you're talking to when you talked about that? Clyde Means? Okay. Thank you.
Well, now that's a new name brought in here. Anyone else that wants to come forward and speak in opposition to?
Can I just make a comment towards that?
Sure.
I'm sure originally when Mr. Maestrick bought the property, he had also intended it to be commercial. And as pointed out, things can change.
Yep, absolutely.
And at any point, Mr. Clausen and his group could certainly come before and ask for a rezoning if they weren't being able to sell it as well.
Right, right. Absolutely. Yep.
Hi, my name is RJ Gall. I own the building on 3204 Kenningston, um, under JAG Investments and that's my wife and I. I bought, I purchased the building from Maestrick Properties about a year and a half ago. And the way that that building was sold to me was that this is a commercial area. I invested over three quarters of a million into the building, um, and the improvements and all of that, um, with the understanding that this is all going to be, stay, commercial. I guess that didn't even cross my mind that this was ever going to look or be residential because commercial just fits there. I, 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 when it was purchased, you know, Chris explained to me that, you know, there is, um, that everything across is zoned the C3, which is, um, would be very good for my business, um, good investment and all of that. My biggest thing is I, I look at it and I just don't think it's, it's fair. Obviously, you, you, you see that and whatever, half a dozen or more businesses find that place their home and invest a lot of dollars there. And all of a sudden now, we're looking at switching it? I just don't feel that that's, um, that's the way that this is, that, that should ever be intended. So I am opposed to this and hopefully you guys see it that way too.
Any questions for RJ?
RJ, you said that was a year and a half ago you bought the building?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it was the old Gulf USA building.
Okay.
And who'd you buy it from?
Maestrick Properties.
And who did you talk to?
I talked to Chris along with, uh, I think Gary Miller was also involved in that. But those, it was Chris. Obviously, I knew Chris and called him up and just got the discussion going and looked at it, liked the area, liked the potential that, you know, we can see with the hospital on one end. We got a convenient clinic on the other. A lot of the property around there is all commercial on that side. Yeah, I, I was definitely on the other side of the street, don't get me wrong. But I meant, everything on the south side is all zoned commercial. I mean, just seems like it would be a good fit for additional commercial to, to fill in there too, so.
Do you have any vision, just out of curiosity, what you see for commercial in there?
Well, you know, if, the other thing, yes, I do. If you look at, um.
Take this down, Courtney.
Yeah, well, look at the, at Columbus, right around their hospital. What are you seeing built all there? That's all commercial. You're seeing, um, therapists, you're seeing eye, foot doctors, similar to what we have going on here. And it continues to fill in with commercial.
Okay, I don't know that, you know, I'm thinking commercial to be more retail, I guess. Maybe that's what I'm not necessar-. And I, I, I get it, but when you're in C3.
Right, right.
You know, there's, there's so many things that can be, RJ. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, you know, it, no. And, but I, I guess I think of it as more an office district type area. And so that being said, is there still that same value in that property? I'm asking the question. If, if I was the foot doctor and I decided to put a building in there, am I going to be paying them for a commercial piece of property rather than? Because it's one of those things that you're going to come to. You know, you're going to have a reason. I mean, because you got a bad foot or whatever it is, is why you're coming there. Do you understand where I'm going with this?
Right.
Somewhat?
More destination.
Yeah.
Well, I, I guess, I, I still, this has been, this term has thrown out to me quite a bit here lately when I've been talking about my value of my.
Sure.
Is, I don't have a crystal ball.
No.
And that's where I, I guess, I, I really feel that everyone keeps saying, you know, I don't have a crystal ball. I understand that, but it's also was, I, I know what I have, the facts in front of me now and what, when I purchased the building, this is the way it was presented. And I made the best investment decision that I could make. And I think that's what the, the city did at that time when they rezoned that to C3. So I, I just don't think that that's, uh, fair to change the, the rules when we've sold half of it and they're like, yeah, and they're going, let's, let's just rezone that and move it. You know, just get it, wipe it up. We're all tired of that, of, of all this. You know, I mean, it's just, it's.
Well, and I appreciate.
Business and so is Chris, everything like that. So I mean, it's, it's, I guess I just wanted to speak my piece.
Yeah, respectfully so you have. And I appreciate that as well, so.
Any other questions? I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else that wants to come and speak in opposition to? Sir, would you come up for us and we'll ask you to sign in and state your name?
I'm Richard Richardson. Good evening, everyone. Uh, I'm a resident, uh, living here in Norfolk since 1985. I, uh, live three blocks from the Kenningstine property in question. I walk this property daily, get my exercise. As I walk down Kenningstine off 34th Street, I visualize that long piece of property. It's being farmed every year. They bail off of it every year. So they are getting something for it during this period of time. I realize that on, uh, Kenningstine, you have the businesses. Norfolk is growing westward. Highway 275, from several years, 10 years ago, we didn't have some of this industry, some of the businesses that we have. Farm fields were everywhere. But we're seeing the farm fields disappear little by little. Farmers are selling off their land. They're selling it to make money. That's obvious. Some are retiring. They don't really, they're out of the farming field. So the residences start building up and you have subdivisions. And you see that in Omaha, subdivisions all over. Uh, we have areas out west that are going to be like that. There's going to be more subdivisions. The city is growing west. But also in growing west, you have to have businesses, industry. And this is a great avenue for industry. And we have very few industries enough space for them to have a place. Now, if Dr. Davis hadn't have taken that piece of property and built his place there, it would still be vacant like the rest of that property. But Dr. Davis decided he wanted the chance to expand his business. He saw the opportunity. There was a place there. It was even close proximity to the hospital. And with the idea of that proximity, I can see in my visualizations, more doctor's offices, more clinics, whatever, going west. And without that property, if we're residential, where would these businesses go? Other businesses have already established, like Flooring Solutions and, uh, Spears and, which is one of the newest ones. They wouldn't have, couldn't have built there had that all been housing. So I think that corridor is a very important corridor. And it's important for the, to have it available for the business purposes, for the, where else can you go? Look at Highway 275 south. Uh, you really don't see anything built there. It's on a, in a flood plain in the first place. Places like Walmart have it. When we have high water, they have problems. They have water up in their front parking lot from the river. So you don't see businesses going south too much on 275. So we're kind of limited in this particular zone. And we need some spaces on the north side for businesses. And I just think that that corridor, uh, when I look at it, is ideal for businesses. I know on the north side of Kenningstine, we have the duplexes, uh, that, that came in to affect, uh, since we moved there. I say that's fine, but I, I just hate to see what is left available for businesses if we lose that, those spaces like that. That's all I have to say. Any questions?
Mr. Richards, thanks, thanks for coming before us. I appreciate that. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Jed Christiansen and I represent J&amp;J Properties, which owns 5,000 square feet of newly constructed office space at 3202 Kenningstine, as well as I own 63,000 square feet of undeveloped C3 zone property at 208 North 34th, which borders the proposed zoning request. It would be the lot across from Farm Credit Services to the east. I'm here tonight testifying in opposition to this zoning request. Have, uh, been out in the area for several years. Built the, uh, office building, uh, just a couple of years ago. Have, uh, I've just gotten to know a lot of the history out there as we've went over tonight. And, um, as, as an entrepreneur, probably want to just maybe praise Chris a little bit for, uh, what he's done out there. He, as we've seen, have taken a space and filled it in and provided tax base to the city and places for people to live, um, office space for people like myself to work. And, um, all that doesn't happen in a town unless somebody steps up to the plate and capitalizes things. So Chris and even everybody, anybody else in here that, that has taken those chances, that's what it takes to build a city. And that's, um, I guess, just wanted to take that chance and, uh, say that to Chris. If you base your vote on the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission that has listened to many, many hours of testimony on this request and they've come to the recommendation that it is not in the best interests of the common good of the, of our area, I would encourage you to vote no as well. If you base your vote on the number of opposed versus the number in support here tonight, I'd encourage you to vote no on this rezoning request. If you base your vote on the good faith and spirit of a real estate transaction, your vote should be no to recognize the commercial zoning that was featured by the same developer when we purchased commercial property from him. If you base your vote on the need for additional R3 zoning in our area of town, if others that might come up here yet say we need more housing in town, if the shortage of R3s is truly, um, if that's truly the bottleneck, it's, uh, we've talked about it a little, but I handed out a map that, um, that I circled. And this is just a, I don't even know if we're one mile out from the proposed zoning request. And you can see that if anything, we, we have an overabundance of R3. The, the shortage of R3 is not why people are not building living units. If you expand out from here, and I spent a lot of time studying, uh, the zoning in town, would be significant amount of R3. So the, uh, I guess the, the argument that we don't have enough R3 in town, that is, that is not true. If you base your vote on the development principle of contiguous zoning, everybody know what I mean by contiguous? Okay, that means trying to put things next to each other. If, if, if we're developing contiguous property, I'd like to point out on this map, and it'd be the, uh, the two yellow or the, uh, the highlighted yellow properties. I, I believe these would be better, um, properties to consider to build housing on. There may or may not be utilities there, but those things can be built around. You can put the driveway on there. You can, um, you can arrange the footings otherwise. You, I, I can't, I can't believe that we, um, that we have property up there that, um, that we can't build something on. The other highlighted is in fact for sale. Clyde Means is listing it for sale for 140, I believe he's asking 140,000 for that property. You could fit six units on that. If somebody has the wherewithal to step up and do those things, there, there's property. there, there's property right there that can be done. There are, there are win-wins for everybody here in this room tonight. I believe the rezoning of those contiguous properties would make a lot more sense before we consider invading a nice rectangular piece of, of C3. If you base your vote on the city's goal of increasing the tax base and to get some building projects started in our area, I'd reference the current expansion of the Farm Credit Building, which they are currently doubling their square footage because of their need for more commercial office space. As well, several Buster Beckenhauer's commercial spaces have also been built out and rented out in just the last year. Commercial development takes more time to happen. But the reward to the city for their patience is a higher tax base per square foot compared to residential development. My building is also an example, as it was built less than two years ago and is fully occupied today with three new businesses to Norfolk. And to, to counter some that say that, that they can't rent commercial space out, I guess I'm living proof that, that we can, because not only do I have it occupied, I have, I have a waiting list of, of others. And because of that, my intention in, in the future is to develop the 62,000 square feet of undeveloped C3 into commercial office space. If you base your vote on the safety of our citizens, I believe that building multifamily housing on the south side of Kenningstein is an open invitation for young children to cross the street. Today, as I, as I view traffic, it appears that, that children and others stay on the north side of the street. Over 10 property owners and business owners in our commercial development have testified in opposition. These people are doctors, our healthcare professionals, our contractors, our service industry professionals. They have the small business backbone of our Norfolk economy. The largest employer in town is not the hospital or the manufacturing industry. It's small business owners. We are the largest annual contributor to the city of Norfolk's tax base. We invest locally because we believe in ourselves. We're entrepreneurs. We believe in our community. We believe in our city. We may not make the newspaper headlines when we hire one new person this year, but as a combined group, the Norfolk economy lives or dies by our ability to prosper. To support this rezoning is to vote against the small business community and the economic well-being of Norfolk. I believe we've offered this developer several compromises that would still allow multifamily housing to be built in our area. Your vote tonight is not about whether you support additional housing projects in Norfolk. We all support that. Tonight's vote is about where we put them. There's a win-win for everyone here tonight, but I do not believe it is with this particular zoning request. That, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Question for you, Mr. Christensen. And I was very interested to hear that you own Lot Number 3, I believe it, or is it a piece of property to the west there? Because I was wondering who physically owned that piece of property that way. And I hear you talk about win-wins that way and that you're in opposition to the, the zoning change request as presented that way. The question that's come through my mind then also is, granted, you, you're in opposition to the zoning change request. Are you in opposition also to the planned unit development overlay as presented?
Yes.
And because of?
I don't claim to be a development expert, but I, I guess I, I picture that this request is, is one and the same. Is that not the case?
Well, a planned development, go ahead, Jim.
The, the planned development gives adjoining property owners and people in the area a guarantee of what you're going to see built there. And the only way that it can change is for it to change. You know, it would have to come back before this body. So to further expand on that then, because then I'm, I'm hearing that you're in opposition to that, but you would be in favor of anything that C3 would allow in there that way?
Yes.
Okay, so you would be in favor of, I mean, C3 allows for, for restaurant, with drive-through windows?
That'd be fine.
McDonald's would be fine there?
Yes, that'd be, that'd save me a lot of, probably a lot of money. Save the Jimmy John guys a lot of time every day, too, from coming to my office.
Okay, and you would be in favor if, if somebody were, say, Teal Haws were suddenly decided to, to build a tire-changing business up there?
I, I knew that, that the list of things we can put in C3, I knew that going into it. I, I knew the rules the day I bought it of what, what C3 can entail. And I don't want to speak for everybody in the room, but I guess that one, you know, that one, when, when we talk about, you know, good faith and trading fairly with each other, I just, that, that's not, that's not how I, I guess, that's, that's not how I would sell land myself. I, I would not sell off half the properties. And then from, for my benefit and to the detriment of others, try to rezone the rest to a different use and change the topography of, of what I sold people. I, I would not do that.
Okay, any other reason I ask the question is because as I was looking at, and I looked at your facility and some of the other facilities up there and in particular, the Farm Credit Union building and the former Gulf USA building, they're, they're all somewhat in, in, you know, short of, or Flooring Solutions and, and, and Dr. Davis's building and Spear physical to a certain extent, the real residential in character in their, in their outwardly appearance, not necessarily in the operations that occur in there. So when I, I saw the planned unit development, I was thinking, okay, this is more similar in character and construction and, and the overall ambiance of the area and that, that it would actually, it could possibly fit in fairly decent that way. But, you know, because after that, I, I had had a conversation a few, quite a few years ago while the Earl was being built with, with one of the, one of the property owners up there. And the comment that I heard from him direct was that, "That dang thing looks like a Taco Bell." I didn't buy this area to have a Taco Bell built next to me. But that, in essence, is what could occur on, on the C3 and any of the other lots that way, too. So, and I'm just relaying the, the comment that came to me at that time. So, so thank you for your input, though.
Yeah, and again, guess just to reiterate, I, I know what C3 entails and I'm willing to have anything C3 as neighbors.
And Jed, I take it from your testimony that you invested there with the understanding and now with the feeling that Kenningstein Avenue acts as a natural bound, boundary between commercial and residential. Is that true?
Yeah, I, I mean, again, I, I don't know anything more about development other than what I've learned the, the hard way in several of these meetings.
Yes.
But I, I think in development, we use roads. We use rivers. We use natural boundaries. We use, use a lot of time to, to divide zoning uses. And I, I believe we have a natural, a natural Kenningstein order to, to separate some residential to, to some commercial. Council members and mayor, if we didn't, if we didn't have options, I, I believe we have options here tonight, which is, which is really, I think, the gift. We, we have some different things we can do. We could explore. There's a lot of R3 up there. There's some right down the road, kitty corner from where this request is being made that has a for-sale sign on it. If we didn't have other options, I'd challenge myself to, to, to think otherwise. But that is not the case. We do have options here tonight. And so I'd just encourage the council to, to vote no on this request. And I, I think, I think those other options will be explored. And I think you, you will, by supporting the commercial property owners out there, I think you will, I think you'll give some confidence to our area. And you will see, you will see more property getting built. Because my, my fear is, my fear is if you let, if you let this prevail tonight, that, that we have a real uncertainty out there of commercial property owners. They don't know who their neighbor's going to be. And that uncertainty, nobody's going to build anything. So I think this tonight will, will help, help us all to probably regain a little bit of confidence that I think we've lost.
Any other questions? Okay, Jen, thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else that wants to come forward and speak in opposition to? Sure, come on up, young man. Glad to see you here. Our youth leadership? Speak your name for us, if you will.
Jesse Ferguson. I just want to say right now that what I'm about to say, I am not representing the Norfolk Youth Leadership at all.
Jesse Ferguson, okay.
Observed here tonight. I didn't plan coming up to speak tonight. I just planned to come and watch and see what's going on. And I'm not 100% sure about the whole situation right now. But from what I think is the main problem that doing this, it would potentially harm the businesses. Yeah, am I assuming?
I believe that's what you're hearing from those that are in opposition. It's, it's a tough one, Jesse. It's one of those deals that, you know, yeah, exactly.
All right, just what I think personally right now, just from observing, is that I have no problem with building houses for families that want to come to Norfolk, and I think that's great. But I'm pretty sure that there are other properties or other places where we can build these properties to where it would be more beneficiary for everyone, especially since we know that it can potentially harm the businesses. That is just what I think from hearing this tonight. And I just thought I'd give my input from observing.
I appreciate that, Jesse. I'm going to ask you to sign in for us.
Yeah.
Okay. I appreciate you coming forward. Certainly, we're going to be looking for you to be running for city council in the next years. How many years of school yet?
I've got, this is going to be my junior year, and then I just got my senior year.
Okay, all right. Anything more you want to say or any questions that you might have?
Do you, do you guys have any questions?
What word, Ian, just in case?
Not yours. I know where he asked. Good job. Pay no attention to him. Thank you. I admire you for coming forward. Okay, all right. How about anyone that maybe just kind of neutral in this? Anyone that wants to come forward and speak?
Mayor members of the council, Courtney Detlinger, City Norfolk's Economic Development Director. I wanted to share with you this evening, as you're considering a rezoning request, some of the background information that might be helpful to you with respect to the housing shortage that we're facing and maybe clear up some things that you heard today about land that is available for development for R3, for multifamily residential. We're currently experiencing a severe housing shortage. In fact, our comprehensive plan that was written about 14 years ago indicated that we were in the midst of a housing shortage. And it's only been exacerbated since that time. It's come to my attention as Economic Development Director because it's impacting our economic growth in the community. I have employers frequently contacting me and letting me know that the lack of housing is actually impinging upon their availability to recruit workforce. Now, why don't we just hire people that are already here? We have less than 4% unemployment. We have 858 jobs that are open right now in the city of Norfolk, and that's before expansions. And so we need workforce. Therefore, we need housing for these people. I talk to folks all the time who are looking to move into the community or who have tried to move into the community recently and are struggling. New dean out at the college had a very difficult time finding a place. We have a new plant manager in town. He has yet to find housing in the community. This is just things that I hear about in the last couple of weeks. More recently, a 2011 housing study conducted by RDG Planning and Design projected the city of Norfolk would need an additional 873 housing units by 2020. That equates to 87 new housing units each year. We are not keeping pace. In the last three years, we had an average of 30 new units. 24 in 2011, just 28 in 2012. For point of reference, in the 1990s, we regularly saw in excess of 100 units being constructed each year. Average, 140 units constructed each year. We're at 24, 28, 30. We're not keeping pace. We were already behind. We hear about all of this land that's available. And, you know, we see a map here and you see that there's land zoned R3. Just having land that's zoned R3 isn't enough. It's got to be in the hands of a property owner who's either willing to develop it themselves or willing to sell the property to somebody who wants to develop it. If it's going to be a feasible development, it's got to have infrastructure somewhere in the area. Otherwise, they're priced out of development. I see two R3 properties right up there held up in trust. I don't know how long they're going to be in that trust, but they're not going to be developed anytime in the near future. I see other R3 property that was referenced that can't be developed because we're using it for retention areas, for water. We run into this frequently when we're trying to find property for folks who may be interested in developing multifamily residential housing here. We're facing barrier after barrier after barrier when it comes to housing. And I've got a lot of employers who are at their wits' end because they can't fill positions. We're losing out on expansions in this community because we don't have the workers to fill the positions. I, I appreciate all the concerns here. I don't want to weigh in on whether or not this is the appropriate area for R3 development. But if we're just saying no to somebody who's willing to come forward and build housing, we don't have a lot of folks willing to come forward and build speculative housing. We're looking. We're actively searching for folks willing to come in and help solve this housing problem. But to go from 140 units a year to 24, we're already, the projections in that 2011 housing study showing that we needed 873 units by 2020, just in three years, we're 164 units behind schedule. I just want to share this with you as the council so that you have a full picture of the community's needs and not just focused in on one particular area. I'm, I'm not getting a lot of requests for commercial land. I show folks this land, if I do. I'd love to move it. I'd love to see some commercial there. I'd love to see some R3 elsewhere. But contrary to what some folks think, just, just because there's grass out there doesn't mean it's developable land. There's floodplain issues. There's not infrastructure. There are unwilling owners. And there aren't a lot of developers who are willing to get into the game. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Courtney, I don't have a question, but I, I, I hear what you're saying and we do need housing. I just don't feel this is the right place to put it, so.
And I respect that. I just want to make you guys aware of the severe housing shortage that we have right now.
That severe housing shortage kind of boggles me a little bit because we've put up, myself have put up, and they sit. put up, myself have put up, and they sit, they'll sit, it takes a while to sell them, and, I mean, it's, we hear about it all the time, sometimes I wonder, and I mean, I understand, this, we've had studies done, and we need housing, I, I say that, but as a builder in this community, you're, nobody's door is being knocked down, saying, "I want a house built right now," you know, it's just...
I, I understand, Shane, and I don't see a huge need for custom-built homes at this moment, it's more the speculative affordable housing.
We've talked about that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it, and it's rental units.
Yeah, I agree with that, we have a, we have a rental problem, that's what we have.
Yeah, and so, you know, the multifamily we, we need, I don't, yeah, I wish that there were more folks that were willing to build custom, you know, move up out of their homes, and we could see some movement in that direction, and I don't know why that slowed down as much as it had, you know, probably due to the economy, same as some of the multifamily residential, but a, a lot of the folks, and in the wake of the housing crisis in '08, can't afford to buy, you know, the, the need for rental's gonna go up in the future.
Well, that's one thing to take note of, the, the market's totally changed in '08, the lending institutions, everything's changed drastically. So when you see those numbers go from an average of, what'd you say, a hundred and forty?
Yeah.
To down to twenty-eight, a lot of that has to do with lending, and the ability to obtain loans, so, you're right, um, you know, for future housing, you're not gonna see developments with a bunch of houses going in. Unfortunately, you know, I, obviously, from my relationship with one of the gentlemen in this room, I'm probably gonna be abstaining from voting tonight, and so, but, uh, and, and you do have to, uh, Mr. Maestrick's done a terrific, terrific job in this area, it's, it's a really neat area, I've had the opportunity to work with one of the gentlemen on his office that he put up in this area, and, uh, it's just makes, it's just, it's a tough go, and you've got people around you not in favor, it reminds me of a, about a year and a half ago, maybe two years ago, when Paul Medelman was in here, trying to put an apartment complex up, and, um, the commercial, everybody came out and for us, and, uh, so it's tough, everything's tough, you know, so...
Yeah, so, and I certainly don't envy the position that the council is in this evening making that decision, but wanted to share with you that side of the picture. It's, it's a difficult one, and I'm really struggling, I have a lot of businesses looking to me for assistance in finding that workforce and finding the housing. I, I don't have a lot of areas for folks to develop on that they're interested in, so...
Any other questions for Courtney? Thank you. I just wanna remind everybody too, you know, I know that there's been maybe a little bit of angst in that the city has worked directly with Mr. Maestrick, with Dick Johnson, in trying to pull some things together to make this workable for everybody, because we have taken on economic development, which wasn't a role of this city completely prior to, a year and a half ago, is that about right, two years, whatever? So I just want you to understand, everyone that comes to the planning commission, there's a pre-planning always done, and hopefully we're working with everyone and trying to make them successful in whatever it is that they're doing. So I just wanna reiterate the fact that, you know, there has been a lot of time and a lot of effort, respectfully so, all of you have come forward with very, um, I believe, in a respectful situation tonight, or a respectful giving of your thoughts, so I appreciate that, because, you know, there's, I, I know there's been angst, believe me, I've had many phone calls on this too, so that being said, I'm done talking, is there anybody else that wants to come forward and maybe speak just neutral on this, or may have questions to address?
Dave wants an answer to his question on the water line. The water line goes across about right just south of the conditional use permit for the, uh, tower there, runs from thirty-fourth, or Thirty-first Street to Thirty-second Street, it's an eight-inch water line, so...
Okay, if, none, no others, Mr. Johnson.
I just, uh, was sitting there, and it dawned on me that, uh, the planned development seemed to slip through the cracks, and everything was, we were discussing with the zoning, so I just wanted to ask if you had any questions regarding that that I could clarify?
Fair question.
Dennis, do you have a, or does staff have a picture of the planned development, just so that the people in the general public can s, can see the proposals in that way? I believe it's in the packets?
So, yeah. But, there were a lot.
There's a picture of the, uh, part of the proposed, you know, structure, there's a lot laid out of that, I think.
Okay.
There's all these, you know, and there's, and, 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 yeah.
Single story, yeah?
Single story, yes.
Okay.
The yard is provided for on the, the park, the yard, where the residential and the parks is, is all located on the residential side of the property here.
If you have any questions, I'll sit down.
Thanks, Dick. All right, I do need to read in a few letters here that we've received in the past week or so. Um, I think if I'm gonna read one, I need to read them all, so, let me begin with, I'm just gonna shake them up and start. That being said, the first one reads, "To whom it may concern, Crafts is a general contractor which, along with its sister company, specializes in commercial, industrial, agriculture, and resident, residential construction. Crafts has been in business in Norfolk since nineteen seventy, employing its citizens, increasing its tax base. Crafts has long recognized the need for additional residential accommodations within Norfolk. Crafts has constructed a variety of residential structures, from single-family dwellings to multiplex, to help address this need. Crafts is pleased to help Norfolk grow by constructing the building in which residents live and work. Sincerely, Tyler Wingate, President." Next, "To whom it may concern, I live in the area of the Maestrick Property rezoning, and as a resident, I'm in favor of the rezoning. The area is a nice place to live, and I believe that the Maestriks have done a great job, nice job in the past with the development area, and I'm sure they will continue to do so. Signed, Sue and Dave Minkie." I live in the area of the Maestrick Properties rezoning, and as a resident, I am in favor of rezoning. The area is a great place to live, and I believe that they have done a nice job in the past with development. Jay Rivers, maybe? "To whom it may concern, I am in favor of the Maestrick rezoning. The area is a nice place to live, and I believe they've done a good job in the past with redevelopment. I'm sure they will continue to do so." Gary Lund. Um, Gary Wyland, "I'm in favor of the Maestrick rezoning." I think I've got a few of these that are probably pretty similar, "I'm in, in favor of the area of rezoning, and as a resident, um, believe that it's a nice place to live, and that the Maestriks have done a good job in the past." That's Jane Steskal. Jerry Wyland, signed, is pretty much the same thing. "We live in the area of the Maestrick Property rezoning, and as a resident, we are in favor of rezoning." Jerry and Jan Camp. I had one other that, um, from Farm Credit that reads, "Zoning Committee. I manage an ag lending business with offices located west of the lots one and two, block one, Green Meadow, second addition to the city of Norfolk. I read in the paper where the owners are requesting a zoning change from commercial to multifamily. I'm opposed to this change, as I feel it would be detrimental to further commercial business development in the area." Who have residential houses, two have residential houses sandwiched between two streets that are either fully or partially developed commercial. "I am unable to attend the public hearing on Monday, July twenty-first, so please consider this letter in opposition. Any questions, please contact me. Signed, Jeff Eisenminger, Vice President, Branch Leader." And that's it, so, that being said, um, we are, we've heard all the testimony on the public hearing here, so with that, I will go forward, and I'm gonna close this public hearing, and I'm gonna look at this council for some discussion.
Did you have the planning commission report?
Well, normally, I, I've got it down, discussion, and then planning commission, is there any, okay, is there any reason, any, any questions, anybody wants, as far as discussion among you, before we hear the planning commission report? Okay, go ahead.
Just a question, and probably might be more to Clint that way, Clint, do, uh, um, do we need to, before we start discussion on them, do we need to open each one individually that way, uh, according to Bobby's rules, or...
Uh, close the hearing.
You close the hearing, correct.
After we do the planning commission report.
I think that, uh, the mayor opened both of the hearings together, uh, unless everybody wants to go through that all over again.
No, not really, that was, yeah.
So I, I think...
Jim, I appreciate that, keep me...
I think it's, I think it's, I think it's an appropriate question, I think that, uh, this is the way that we've customarily handled these things, I think it's appropriate, uh, when the, uh, questions come forward, there are, there are three action items, uh, committed, or that are before you, uh, the comprehensive plan change, the zoning is the second one, the third one is the, is the, uh, plan development. I would note with the plan development, that's a little bit different than the other ones. Uh, the plan development is before you, uh, it's really the second stage of a four-stage procedure, if that were to be ultimately approved by this council. Two things, if I may, Mayor, about the plan development, one is, if you approve it, it goes back to the planning commission for them to deal with, and then it would come back forward, and it would be before you, again, for a final determination. The, the second thing I would say about that plan development is that the plan development is premised on the, uh, approval of the, um...
Comp.
On the zoning change, primarily on the comp plan, and, and the zoning change, if the zoning wasn't changed, the plan development could not be approved because of what it contains.
Okay, that way, from what I'm understanding, that you're telling me this plan development could not occur on C3 property?
That is correct.
Okay.
Ah, okay, all right, any further discussion or questions? If not, then I'll ask you, Beth, for the planning commission report.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing at the request of Maestrick Properties to amend the city of Norfolk's comp plan from commercial to high residential, high-density residential on West Kenningstine Avenue. They requested a zone change from service commercial to R3 multiple family, and they wished to build two, three, and four-unit residential houses on the property. When the property was initially zoned to C3, the comp plan was amended to commercial with the request to residential. Maestrick is now requesting an amendment to the comp plan to high-density residential. During the public hearing, many commercial property owners voiced their opinion against the change to residential. The planning commission voted four to four on a vote to amend the comp plan to high-density residential. And then I've got one more.
And then the planning commission report on...
Yes.
...the zoning change.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing at the request of Maestrick for a zone change from C3 service commercial to R3 multiple family on West Kenningstine. They request a zone change, uh, that requires an amendment to the comp plan. The applicant wants to build the two, three, and four-unit residential structures, and commercial properties voted, uh, voiced their opinion against the zone change, but the planning commission voted four to four on the change.
All right, so with that, then, we're gonna look for consideration of ordinance five three hundred, amending the comprehensive plan from commercial to high-density residential at thirty-two oh five, thirty-three oh one, Kenningstine Avenue.
To clarify, Clint, uh, if this amendment to the comprehensive plan should not pass, would we proceed with the, uh, a vote on the zoning change?
I don't think so. I, I think you do not, if the, if the comp plan fails, there's no reason to vote on the zoning change, and also, there's no reason to deal with the, uh, plan development either in that event.
Your Honor, in order to get the ball rolling, so that maybe we, we make it home before tomorrow that way, I would move consideration of ordinance number five three zero zero, amending the comprehensive plan from commercial to high-density residential at thirty-two oh five to thirty-three oh one, Kenningstine Avenue.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Okay, we have a motion with a second.
Your Honor, I'll be abstaining from voting.
Respectfully so. What do you need next, Beth? Is there a short title on this? Okay.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the future land use map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, before I call the question, again, let me just say, respectfully, I think this has been very well done, and I thank you all for that, so, please vote.
Voting in favor of the ordinance, Councilman, um, Langy, voting against the change or the ordinance, Grandquist, Merrill, Murin, Moaning, Faust, and File, motion fails.
Okay, thank you all for coming out, and again, please leave friendly, open, and we'll go forward here. All right, so with that, where do we jump to?
Number twenty-five, you wanna introduce those, or do you wanna...
Oh, I'd...
Do I need to say that you said that they were going to go forward?
I think it's...
Okay, go to twenty-five. Okay, so we're gonna move on to, uh, twenty-five, a public hearing, "To comply with the provisions of NRS eighteen dash seventeen fifty-five before the consummation of purchase of property by the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, which property is located on the west side of Victory Road, south of the Meadow Ridge Development." I will open this public hearing, and I believe we're looking to you, Dennis.
Um, yeah, there's a piece of property that, uh, is located on the west side of Victory Road that will serve well for, uh, water detention for the property, the Meadow Ridge Development that's immediately north of it, as well as some of the water that works from the east side of Victory Road down through, through that area, and accesses into the flood control, um, or access to the flood control is about where the bar's showing up on the, on the drawing there, so, um, this would be, uh, probably caring to authorize, uh, purchase of this property.
Okay, any questions at all for Dennis?
I have one, Dennis, do we need that whole piece to do that, or are you trying to get that, and then we'd sell off part of it, or do we need it all?
Um, actually, the purchase order that's, that's, uh, coming up doesn't quite acquire all of it, the property owner didn't wanna sell all of it. If I had my brothers, I would, I would use it all for the, for the detention, but we'll make it work with what we've got.
There's a small piece of property along Victory Road, south side of that, that, um, the current owner's retaining. But we are gonna look for, uh, additional purchases as we move forward with property in the area that could, to accommodate this drainage for that, for northeast Norfolk, so we'll be moving forward with, uh, some additional properties down there, trying to negotiate, um, those, those purchases as well, to get the drainage to go to the flood control.
This piece right here that I'm kinda showing with my cursor will be property that will not be acquired. Our, uh, public hearing notice area is a little bit broader than what we're gonna actually end up acquiring.
So are you intending to sell that back off, or keep it, or...
It's not being, it's not being included in the purchase agreement.
Oh, okay.
What I'm saying is my hearing, our hearing notice is a little bit larger than the property that we'll actually have been able to negotiate a contract for.
Okay, any other questions?
And we will be back having another one of these hearings for the next two properties to the south, but, just dawned on me, it should've been included, but...
So as, as we move forward with future developments, Dennis, this is kinda the way of the west now, where we're gonna be acquiring property for water retention, and, I mean, is this...
Oh, I think that, that that's gonna be, uh, that's a better, uh, solution to infrastructure than trying to build the pipes to move it all the way to the river in well-fell, one-fell swoop. It'll also provide some, uh, water quality benefits, and it will slow that water down, uh, give it a time, if, what sediment we get in there to work its way out. Some of the grasses that will grow in these areas will help with... Some of the grasses that will grow in these areas will help with nitrogen removal as well, some of the other things that you get from lawn runoffs.
I got two questions, Dennis. Does the, does the water just go onto the edge of the flood control and then headed back south to get into it?
Yeah, there's, there's a, let me go back to my. The water will flow basically from the northeast to the southwest, and then it also flows down, flows down adjacent to the flood control, but there's a structure that lets the water into the flood control in about this area. And it's the only one that's located between Norfolk Avenue and Benjamin Avenue on the east side.
Okay.
So it's the only option we have to get the water into the flood control channel.
And then the house that's on there, do we incur the cost of removal?
Yes, we're going to tear that house down.
That's not included in the $99,000?
No.
Good question, Cory. Any, anything else, counsel?
Got a general idea what it'll cost to remove the home?
I think the bid was just under $4,000, and Norfolk Construction has the low bid. And I already contacted them, and they're prepared to tear that house down by the end of the month, I hope. If this purchase goes through tonight, they're dependent upon that, but we want to move forward. We have property maintenance concerns there. The house has been abated from asbestos and, you know, and disrepair because it's been abandoned for a number of years, so the neighbors are ready for it to go away. So we're going to move fast on that.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Do I see anybody in the audience that wants to come forward and speak to this issue? If not, then I think we've had enough discussion. So how about a Planning Commission report, Beth? Nothing on that? Okay, so I'll close the hearing and ask for your vote. Oh, that makes sense. What? Okay.
I got, sorry, Mayor, I've got one.
No, that's okay, go ahead.
Where, when we purchase property like this, where are these funds allocated out of?
Funds for, funds for this project are in the capital construction budget. So it's, this particular one is general fund funds for the most part?
All right, so I'm looking for, anything else? What'd you say? Did I not close the hearing? Yeah, closed it. Okay, and we're going to look for consideration of approval of the real estate purchase agreement with Jay Paul and Eleanor McIntosh for attractive property on the west side of Victory Road, south of Meadow Ridge Development, for an amount of $99,500.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Any discussion? Let's vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
And next is a public hearing at the request of Kelly Mucci to amend the comprehensive plan from Elkhorn River Corridor to Rural Residential at 3330 South Grandview Drive. I will open the hearing and, yep, my, we're going to combine 29 as well, a public hearing for a zoning change from Ag District to RR at 3330 South Grandview Drive. So again, I will open the public hearing. Gentlemen, who's, I don't see.
Mayor, Council, I don't believe there's anyone here to speak to that directly. The fairly simple application in that the desire is to build a dwelling on that property. The, this comp plan amendment and zone change facilitates that for, for the applicant, and I believe the staff recommended approval of that based on Trent's notes and the file here, and the Planning Commission was supportive of that recommendation, so.
Okay. Does anybody have any thoughts or questions on this one before we turn to Beth for a Planning Commission, I, yeah, Planning Commission report?
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on July 8th at the request of Cali Mucci to amend the comp plan from Elkhorn River Corridor to Rural Residential. He applied for a zone change to RR on the property to build a cabin, and the Planning Commission voted nine to zero to amend the comp plan to Rural Residential. The Norfolk Planning Commission also held a public hearing at the request of Cali Mucci to, for a zone change from A Agricultural to RR Rural Residential at 3330 South Grandview. He wants to build a cabin on the area, and he's asking for an amendment to the comp plan as well. There was no opposition at the Planning Commission report, at the Planning Commission hearing, and they voted nine to zero in favor of the zone change.
So with that, I will close both the public hearings and ask for consideration of ordinance number 5302, amending the city of Norfolk's comprehensive plan from Elkhorn River Corridor to Rural Residential at 3330 South Grandview Drive.
Your Honor, I'll introduce ordinance 5302 on first reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second.
Your Honor, I'll be abstaining from voting again.
Okay.
Why did I even show up? I don't know.
Do we have a short title, Beth?
We do.
All right.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the future land use map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when the ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Councilman Clausen abstaining. Ordinance 5302 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I move we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5302 on second and third.
Okay, we have a motion with a second to suspend the rules and pass on second and third. Any further discussion? If not, I will ask that you vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5302 carries on second and third.
And next would be consideration of ordinance 5303, amending the zoning district from A Agricultural District to RR Rural Residential at 3330 South Grandview Drive at the request of Cali Mucci.
Your Honor, I introduce ordinance number 5303.
Motion with a second?
Your Honor, I will be abstaining from voting again.
Yah, 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 okay. Do we have a short title here too, ma'am?
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when the ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Councilman Clausen abstaining. Ordinance 5303 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I move we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5303 on second and third.
Second that, Your Honor.
We have a motion with a second to suspend the rules and pass on second and third. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5303 carries on second and third.
Okay, next up, consideration of ordinance number 5297, amending the zoning designation from A Agricultural District to I1 Light Industrial at 2900 Old Highway 8. Ordinance number 5297 was tabled at our June 16th city council meeting, and it passed on first reading at the July 7th, 2014. So we're here for the second reading. First of all, now, I need, I'm going to amend, and I need to read this, is that right? "To amend, upon review of the issues raised during the July 7th, 2014 meeting, it was determined that the area requested to be rezoned by Off-Road Ranch extended beyond the city's current extraterritorial zoning area. It was also determined that the balance of the Off-Road Ranch property is currently zoned industrial. It has also been determined that the result of annexation of property on the northwest corner of US 275 and Nebraska 24, that the entire Off-Road Ranch property can be brought into the city's extraterritorial zoning. Staff has begun the process to accomplish the expansion, expansion of the ETZ. The process requires Planning Commission review and recommendation. In the interim, the best solution is to amend ordinance number 5297 to include only the property currently included in the city's ETZ. This is accomplished by the following action. After introduction of ordinance 5297 on second reading, a councilperson can make a motion that, moving that section one of ordinance number 5297 be amended to read as follows. That the A Ag District zoning on the following described real estate, oh my goodness, to the north half-quarter of the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter, and all of that part of the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter lying and being south of the county road, commonly known and referred to as the Stanton Road and as Old Highway Number 8, all in Section 6 Township 23 North, Range 1, east of the 6 PM in Stanton County, Nebraska, is hereby changed to Light Industrial District." So I'm looking for, first of all, we have to have an introduce on second. To introduce on the second, okay, on second reading. Okay, so I need a motion to introduce this on second reading.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number 5297 on second reading. Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second, and now I'm looking for the, this motion to amend as read into the record, would be my suggestion.
Your Honor, I, I would move introduction of ordinance number 5297 on second reading and to make the following motion. I move section one of ordinance number 52.
We need the amendment first, right?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right? Am I right in what we're doing? Yeah, we need, I need a motion.
Is that what you're reading?
He was making that motion. I believe I, yeah, I thought I was.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
I move that section one, as an amendment, I moved that section one of ordinance number 5297 be amended to read as follows, that the A Agricultural District zoning on the following described real estate to wit the north one-half of the southwest one-quarter of northwest one-quarter, and all that part of the northwest one-quarter, of the northwest one-quarter lying and being south of the county road, commonly known and referred to as the Stanton Road and as Old Highway Number 8, all in Section 6 Township 23 North, Range 1 East of the 6 PM in Stanton County, Nebraska, is hereby changed to I1 Light Industrial District.
Wow.
Did you just make a circle?
I really couldn't tell you. I, I just know that two lefts don't make a right.
Right, okay. So did he make that motion to amend? Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Jim, second.
Jim, second it.
Just don't make me read it again.
All right. So, yep, we're going to vote on the amendment as read a couple times. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Okay, now, we need to vote on, on?
Second reading.
The second reading, as amended. Okay, so I need a motion?
No.
No. We got a motion. Okay. Are you all with us on this? Okay, all right. So that being said, can we go forward and vote on second reading? Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5297, as amended, passes on second reading.
Your Honor, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass on third reading, since third reading does not have further discussion on it, so.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second to pass on third reading. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5297 carries on third reading.
Okay. Now where are we here?
Number 32.
Two? All right. Consideration of ordinance number 5304, amending section 24-110 of the city code to reduce the speed limit on East Norfolk Avenue from the west edge of the roundabout at the junction of East Norfolk Avenue and Nebraska Highway 35 to Chestnut from 45 miles per hour to 35 miles per hour. Do I have a motion for consideration?
Your Honor, I'd make the motion.
Okay, with that, you're on, Chief.
Thank you, Your Honor. Members of the council, I'm certainly hoping this will not take nearly as long as, as some of the other items that you've had facing you tonight. With the construction of the roundabout there at the east edge of Norfolk, it was brought to our attention that the speed limit going into the roundabout, as you go through there, is 20 miles per hour. When you come out under the current code, you can accelerate back up to 45 miles per hour, but within about a five to six-block span, a distance, you've got to reduce speed again to 35. So it was recommended, and we accepted that recommendation, that we reduce that speed and make it 35 from when you come out of the roundabout on into town until you hit 25. We think that it's much more likely that it'll be a smoother transition, and less likely that someone will get their speed up and get into that 35 mile-hour zone while they're still going up, and we'd like to reduce the opportunity for some people to get tickets that they shouldn't necessarily receive if we would happen to see them there. So we would request that you would approve this change to the speed ordinance.
Okay. Any questions on that at all? I think it makes sense. Beth has a short title.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend section 24-110 of the official city code to reduce the speed limit on Norfolk Avenue from the west edge of the roundabout at the junction of Norfolk Avenue and Nebraska Highway 35 to Chestnut Street from 45 miles an hour to 35 miles per hour, to provide when the ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5304 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I move we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5304 on second and third.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second to suspend the rules and pass on second and third. Any further discussion? If not, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5304 carries on second and third.
All right. Consideration of approval to award a contract to Merit Mechanical for the Police Division HVAC upgrades project in the amount of $487,300.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of awarding the contract to Merit Mechanical.
Second.
A motion with a second? Looking to you again, Chief.
I have very little information on this, other than
Very little?
the fact that a bid was let with the approval of the elected officials. We had two companies that responded to that bid. The low bid was submitted by Merit Mechanical in the amount of $487,300. There was a second bid that was submitted by Volcom Plumbing and Heating, but it was higher than what this bid was. So the recommendation of our consultant, Morrissey Engineering, as well as staff, would be to accept the low bid so that we can proceed with the project going into the fall here. And I or Mr. Smith would be very happy to answer any questions you might have regarding this matter.
Chief, the only question I guess I have is, in, in this bidding process, was there a timeline? Was when this project was supposed to be started and completed?
There was a timeline that was laid out. It was, as I understand it, the timeline would allow for the electrical lighting work to be done the end of the summer, early end of the fall, while some of the equipment was being ordered to, to do for the HVAC. And then in, I believe, September, it would begin the actual heating, ventilation, and air conditioning work, and it's supposed to be completed, my understanding is, by around mid-November.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Chief, is, is this a complete replacement of the existing system there? Or what, what's being done exactly?
Hello, Dennis.
I, I ask, it, it's a, it's a big-ticket item.
Yep, that's fair, Josh.
I'm not sure that I know a whole lot more than, than Chief Meisner did. This is a project that was started by a staff member that's no longer here and had most of the input into it. But my understanding is, is that we have a, well, first of all, we're working with the original HVAC system that was put into that building 20, 30 years ago.
Twenty seven, or six years.
So, you know, it's given us good service. The air conditioning was a once-through water cooling system that created some issues. They're going to a compressor-type, chiller-type system. The control system is pneumatic or air system. They're going to solid-state system on that, changing out the lights to a more high-energy efficiency system. efficiency system. The boiler was in good condition, is going to be reused in that part of the system, so that's the limited knowledge I know as to what it is. But you're right, it is a big-ticket item, but hopefully, you know, we can get another 25 years out of the upgrade, so... Hopefully, the efficiency part of it will pay for some of it back, you know what I mean? Right, it should, most certainly should.
Is Merit a local contractor, and have we used them before?
Merit is from Tilden, so they consider Norfolk home. I don't know that I can name a project that Merit has done for the City of Norfolk, but they have done extensive work for the community college. And in fact, they're the HVAC contractor on their new building that's going up, I think maybe even both of them out there at the college. So they're a reputable company and will do a fine job. The consultant has worked with them before and knows their work, and so...
Any other questions at all, council? If not, then I would ask that you please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Okay, and next would be consideration of ordinance number 5305 amending section 18-11 of the city code to include language prohibiting unlicensed travel trailers and trailers from being in the park and including sidewalks and trails to the sentence prohibiting motorized vehicles on bike paths.
Your Honor, I'll introduce ordinance 5305 on first reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second.
I have a question. Would that include, like, you know, if you're a motorized vehicle on sidewalks and bike trails, would that include somebody who has like a handicap with a scooter or some sort of, would they then be prohibited from using the bike trails?
I can answer that.
Yeah.
Please do.
There's an exception for those sorts of vehicles. And it's right here. It says this section is not applicable to scooters, power chairs, electric wheelchairs or such having more than two wheels which are designed for and being utilized by individuals of limited mobility. What this ordinance really comes from is that there is currently a prohibition against motor vehicles being in the park and if they don't have, if they're unlicensed. There was a problem with a vehicle that was not licensed at the campgrounds, and so we addressed that problem with this ordinance that said, not only can they not be in the campgrounds, they can't be in the park, okay? But when we were looking at that, this happened to be a self-contained vehicle or camper. It wouldn't have involved travel trailers, and that's what we're adding to this, is just the trailer component of that so that it doesn't need to have an engine for that to be available.
Any other questions or comments? Short title, Beth?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend section 18-11 of the official city code to prohibit unlicensed travel trailers or trailers from being in a city park and to prohibit motorized vehicles on sidewalks and trails, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5305 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I'd move...
Go ahead.
I'd move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5305 on second and third reading.
Second.
We have a motion with a second to suspend the rules and pass on second and third. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5305 carries on second and third.
And with that, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.